Mr. Montgomery, we're ready to go?
Yes, sir, Mayor.
First off, can we have a report out of the closed session, Mr. Summers?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the council met in closed session and considered two items. First, the public performance evaluation for the city manager. On that, the council provided direction to staff and council, took no reportable action. And then the second, on the performance evaluation for the city attorney, there the council also began the discussion, but will be continuing it to the April 22 meeting, provided direction to staff and council, and took no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will end the closed session and begin the open session. Wow, yeah. So artificial, but here we are. If that's all it takes, let's start again with a roll call, please, Mr. Montgomery.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Gilman.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lang.
Here.
Councilmember Rule.
Here.
Councilmember Whitman.
Here.
Councilmember Mang.
Here.
Thank you very much, and the Pledge of Legions, please, Mr. Montgomery.
Yes, welcome, community. Please rise as you are able. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I please have an approval of the agenda? Or changes?
I'll approve the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I got, I have a couple of.
Okay.
And actually, okay, go ahead, Councilmember, sorry.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, so on, on item three, the Finance and Budget Committee, I'd like to pull that one. Councilmember Mang and I spoke at length about the Budget Committee. She had, and not, we both support that we should have a Budget Committee, but its composition is an issue. And we've learned some information from our new Finance Director in terms of cities who have gone without a resident model. In other words, they didn't have any residents on it. Other cities have one resident. And I think it would be a good, and also, I guess, the Finance Director is coming up with a new analysis about our investment model.
Okay.
And so our thought would be to, you know, bring it back fairly quickly with a report from staff about that what's the proper composition of our Budget Committee.
That reflects something that I was also interested in, which was adding, not the composition, but adding a piece to the appointment, which would be an interview among a subset of the committee, whoever that's composed of. So I think that makes sense that we, if I'm hearing you right, we pulled that to say we want to look at the composition first of the Budget Committee, and I'm suggesting the process, bring it back very quickly, so that we have a Budget Committee for the next cycle.
I'd add that to my
Great.
reason, being that we look at the process for.
Okay. Any objections? All right. So we will move, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and then I've also got, on number five. So this is the City Council protocols, and I think that there just hasn't been enough time from receiving them to go through and I personally, my mom's memorial service was over the weekend. I didn't even see the protocol on the calendar until Sunday night. I've spent quite a bit of time with it, but, you know, I do have a job, so it's, there are things that I would support, but there are things that I'm concerned about, that I think I have a lot of questions that would be better that I ask our city attorney, potentially the city manager, and and, you know, come prepared to, you know, potentially suggest some modifications of what's been put in front of us. So I'd request that indulgence, that we move that item to our next hearing and.
Do you feel two weeks is sufficient?
It's sufficient if the, if it fits the calendar, that's my only reservation.
Because that's our second part of the strategic planning.
Yeah, so if you wanted to go to the next meeting after that, I mean, I'm fine with that.
That sounds more reasonable. And I, if I would be willing, I would like to suggest, I hear you, is that we would take a very conservative approach in general up to that time, and basically not have to push any of those limits until we figure those out, in terms of what kind of meetings do you have when? Yep?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, any objections? All right. We're gonna have a shorter meeting than we thought.
Well, and Mayor, if I might.
Yes, please.
On top of this, staff has a request too, and Mr. Seibert is here to make a request to the council as well.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so I have a request for consent item number 1E to be pulled from tonight's City Council agenda with the opportunity to conduct additional review of the applications submitted and consider other opportunities to further public engagement through these two groups. And really, that's the Climate Action Plan Group as well as the Economic Diversification Group. That's really what we're looking at here. The matter was scheduled before this body for tonight, from the February 11 meeting. I wasn't here, and I accepted the timestamp on that, but the reality is, is that when you're doing applications and you're vetting that, you really do need more than just the time that was allotted here. So I'm asking to pull it for staff to do the initial additional analysis and then kind of make sure it's fully baked before it comes back here.
Any objections?
No, but I do have a question. Just more specifically, what does "fully baked" mean? What does "vetting" mean? Or are you just gonna delve into that and open it back up?
I'd like to dive into that more. Mainly, the, if you see in the staff report, I have 19 applications to choose from.
Yeah.
And of those, there was a discussion before this body that we really kind of stay in-house, meaning only those individuals that are residents within the city or within the sphere of influence. Yeah, sphere of influence. That narrows it down to 14.
Okay.
I need, I need more. I need more of a pool than that.
You need more of a.
More of a pool to choose from than that.
Okay.
Because right now, I'm very limited in terms of who I can select.
Between the two groups?
Correct.
Yes, correct, okay.
Correct. And within the one group, Economic Diversification, it's three different, different groups. As you see in the staff report, one of the groups really only has one person there.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Great, any objections?
Yeah.
Or questions? Yes.
I, I just, so I am in support of that, and I just also wanted to note that you're also, in addition to being in the city, you're also looking for individuals with experience in the, in the subject matters that are listed for climate and, you know, for economic diversification, climate science and policy.
Both, yes.
Public health. Okay, so just, just double checking that and.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So we'll pull E, consent item E. Any other changes?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Any move to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second, any objections? Okay, great. All right. Wow. What are we gonna do here? No, I was kidding. So we have an approval of the agenda. So then first, we have a presentation from our Police Chief on 2024 year-end crime statistics for the city of Ojai. Welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Counsel, and city members. So this presentation was already in the works before we made our transition, so we figured it just might be a little easier if I go ahead and present this to you. So tonight, I'm presenting to you the city of Ojai crime statistics for 2024. Next slide, please. Just a quick mention before we start these. So usually when we stand up here and give you crime statistics, we usually have a comparison from the year prior. Unfortunately, in early 2024, we transitioned our crime reporting and how we report our crimes to DOJ. We used to use Uniform Crime Reporting, now we use National Incident-Based Reporting. So it's quite different. And unfortunately, because of the reporting, we do not compare apples to apples. So for 2024, we don't have a comparison from 2023 for you. Starting in 2025, when we make those crime statistics presentation for you in 2025, we will again have that comparison for you. So for 2024, these are our basic crime statistics. Very high level, what you're looking at is our calls for service in the city only, which were just over 3,500 calls for service. Our response time, 6.64 minutes. That is strictly our priority one, which would, we, we would consider our urgent calls, so emergency-related calls that we're usually responding with lights and sirens to. Our arrests, 261, which includes both felony and misdemeanor arrests, and our traffic accidents, nine injury 46, and injury 32. Next slide, please. So now we break our crime statistics down into three categories. We categorize them into crimes against persons, crimes against property, and crimes against society. Here is, you will see the numbers in crimes against persons for the city. You will see we had one homicide that was strictly in regards to a traffic fatality. We had 73 reports of crimes against persons total. Sex offenses, we had two, aggravated assaults, 17, simple assaults, 51, and intimidation and kidnapping, two incidents. The majority of our aggravated and simple assaults, which that includes both felony and misdemeanor assaults. The offender was known to the victim, so I just really want the public to know these are relationships that are already known. These aren't just random people usually coming up and assaulting someone. The, the relationship has already been established there. The intimidation and kidnapping incidents were in relation to domestic violence, so again, not some random kidnapping incident going on here in Ojai. And the increase in assaults is consistent with prior increases that we've seen starting, coming out of COVID. So they've steadily increased coming out of 2021. Next slide, please. Crimes against property. In 2024, there were 149 total reports of crimes against property, and that consisted of two incidents of robbery, five of burglary, 51 of larceny, three of motor vehicle theft, two of arson, 46 of vandalism, and 36 of fraud and forgery. Arrests were made in both of the robbery cases, and again, when we talk about robbery cases, this isn't like bank robberies that we're talking about here. Really, it's just a person-to-person theft, but because there's a use of fear involved in that, it's classified as a robbery. Our burglary cases consisted of two residential burglaries and three commercial burglaries, which is a reduction compared to the previous year. Burglaries pretty much stay the same in how we report them, so we knew that we were, we had less incidences of burglary than we did the prior year. Larceny includes petty theft, grand theft, and shoplifting. The number of occurrences is consistent compared to previous years when we just look at the incidence of what the thefts were entailing. Check fraud and forgery has been a frequent trend here in the city of Ojai, along with phone scams and identity theft. And again, the offender in this case is almost always unknown, because typically they're using internet or phone scams to lure victims into sending money via mail or other, by other means, which leads us to very limited resources in terms of investigating them. Next slide, please. Crimes against society. In 2024, there were 55 total reports of crimes against society, which included narcotics violations, weapons violations, and animal cruelty. Due to the nature of how we report crimes against society, typically, an arrest is always made in these cases. So out of 55 total cases, there were 54 arrests in these incidents. Next slide, please. In this slide, you will see, basically, it's just a comparison of all three categories, the crimes against persons, property, and society. And as you can see, property crimes make up pretty much more than 50% of our crime here in Ojai, which for us is preferable to see crimes against property versus crimes against persons. Next slide, please. This slide will tell you how the percentage and how many cases were cleared by arrest. In crimes against persons, we have a 78% clearance rate, which means we're making arrests in 78% of these cases, which out of 73, 57 were cleared. Crimes against property, a 26% clearance rate. And the reason that is so low is crimes against property includes forgery, fraud, identity theft. And again, the suspects in those cases could be in another state, they could be in another country when they're sending emails and phone scams. So those are very difficult to investigate. Crimes against society, again, the nature of how they're reported, very high clearance rate of 98%. Next slide, please. Our traffic citations for, that says 2023, my mistake, this is 2024. Our highest traffic citations were given by means of, as a result of using the phone while driving. No, that's not a surprise to us. We've, over the year, were looking at the cause of a lot of accidents, and that's what a main cause of accidents was, was driving distracted. And then you'll see the following numbers in terms of what the other citations were given for. Next slide, please. That's a short, brief overview, quick overview of our crime statistics. And for the public, these statistics can be found on our website at venturasheriff.org and can be viewed on our, our forward-facing dashboard that's available. But for 2025, and I'm sure Captain Jenkins can probably expand on this a little bit more, but as the council, you know that you approved our traffic motor, and we are diligent working, diligently working towards that and giving updates to the city manager about how we're moving along and progressing in that. So we're hoping to get that moving. For 2025, we're hoping to bring back our foot patrols and our bike patrols, something unfortunately, we couldn't do last year because of staffing and overtime, but hopefully we'll be able to do that again in the coming year. So with that, I will open it up to any questions that you may have of myself or Captain Jenkins.
Is your new title commander?
Yes.
So commander. I heard you say that the matrix are different. I understand that, but just your general feeling, year compared year on year, would you say Ojai continues to be a safe place, no real trend change?
Absolutely, yes. I, I can speak to that because I do live here, and so it is, you know, pretty important to me, but yes. Generally speaking, our crime statistics, even though we're not comparing the same thing from 2023 to 2024, the city of Ojai still looks pretty good in terms of our crime statistics, and I would say, yes, it is a very, very safe place to live.
I think I read something that said that Ojai was the safest city in Ventura County.
Oh, I, I'm not, I won't go that far to say that.
Well, I don't know if that's true.
I don't know. I know there's other cities in the county that would love to claim that as well, so.
Okay.
But yes, we're doing, we're doing pretty good here in Ojai.
Any questions? And I failed to welcome Chief Jenkins here to our table. Welcome.
Thank you.
We love having you here.
Yeah, I guess I do have a question. How is larceny distinguished from those other theft-type of crimes?
So larceny really includes, is inclusive of grand theft, petty theft. It's just, it's a kind of overall category that you can throw all the different thefts into. We distinguish, you know, when we're looking at really getting down and breaking into felony versus misdemeanor, that's where we're gonna look at petty theft, grand theft, motor vehicle theft. But generally speaking, when you're just kind of giving a general idea, larceny includes all those different types of thefts.
Any other questions? Yes, please.
Of the, of the, the different types of crimes, do we have a sense of how many crimes were perpetrated by residents of Ojai versus people who were visiting from out of town?
It's a great question, but we do not keep statistics like that. If that's something that, that you would like to do, we would really have to delve into and look on a case-by-case basis to extract that information.
That's very interesting. Anything else? Thank you very much, Commander Newman.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here for everything you're doing. Okay, great. We will open it up to Public Communications. Currently, I have one public speaker card, and that is Larry Steingold. Hello, Mr. Steingold.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you, actually, for the honor of being on the, or being asked to be on the advisory group. Hopefully, you will not use science, education, and degrees as a bar to get people on the climate. It's raining outside, I know about weather. All right, but I'm not on that. But more importantly, a shout out to Public Works and Park and Rec. Public work, the road work is amazing, and roads are getting done, I think that's wonderful. And Park and Rec, the brochure and the activities and everything is, please go read it. Please look at it. And it's, that's, it's a wonderful thing, and they're doing a great job. On the budget, which I would, since it's no longer on the agenda, I would love you to look at lowering the minimum to $100,000. We're not New York, we're not LA, we're not Ventura. We have $16 million to spend. I know it may be a burden on staff occasionally to respond, but a paragraph on each item going through, I mean, you don't have to be, you have to have knowledge of budgets, I mean, you could have three people on it, which I think you should have more than two. We're the stockholders. You're the Board of Directors, they're the company. They're doing a great job, you're doing a great job, but somewhere along the line, five $50,000 checks going sideways. I come from the state of Rhode Island, so it's like, things are like that. You know, so please, lower the threshold and consider having more than two people from the public, because there's a lot of educated, knowledgeable budget people in the city who you can use. You, we need them. You're not, you're not an island unto yourselves. We have a lot of volunteers and a lot of smart people in this town. I do not necessarily include myself among them. Right, but anyway, but please, I mean, the agenda's moving nicely. I understand they're drilling four more holes? I'm not sure. For the, for the phase two?
I'll respond once you're finished.
Okay. I hear they're, I hear they're doing more testing to see how deep and what have you for the, that's a good thing. Be thankful we don't have VOCs, otherwise the project would be doing for years. It'd be going somewhere else. Removing dirt is just the number. Thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. Did you want to respond, Mr. Harvey?
Yes, Mayor. So in response to Mr. Steingold's question, I believe he was asking about phase-two testing for the Cabin Village Project, and, and he is correct. Consistent with council direction and the discussion at the last meeting, Rincon Consulting has embarked upon additional testing. We expect to know more in the next couple of weeks. And pursuant to council direction, we will come back with the results of that when we bring the proposed development management agreement with Dignity Moves. Those will both come to you together, and you can review them together. And we'll obviously keep the public in that as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Can I ask a quick question? Do you have a timeline for when that will be coming back?
Yes, good question. I think it's, we have placed it on the working agenda for the first meeting in May.
And, and the contract for Dignity Moves will be coming back for that?
Both together, yes.
Perfect. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
And just on that topic, in, in the event, let's say Rincon Consulting needs more time, then we will move it to the second meeting in May, and if that happens, I will certainly let council and the public know.
Okay, and you will keep those two items together regardless of any delay for one or the other?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Anything online, Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, Mayor. Let's take this time to speak to our Zoom participants. We are on Public Communications, which is our, which is our general public comment period. I have no raised hands now, but I do want to make sure we utilize our hybrid format here. Last call to raise a hand before we move on to consent calendar. And we'll move on.
Thank you very much. And we, we did talk about our agenda, but now we're on the consent calendar. We pulled item E, so that will not be there. And do we want to talk about any of the other items or pull them out separately? Yes, Mr. Whitman.
Yeah, I'd like to pull C and F for discussion purposes.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I had, I had those on my list, too.
Wonderful. Yes?
Is it time to talk about C, or do we vote on the rest of it?
Should we vote on the rest of then, okay, so do I have an approval for items B, A, B, D, and, and that's it? A, B, D.
I'll move to approve A, B, D.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Or do we need a call? All's in favor? Yes? Okay, great. All right, let's talk about C.
Okay, so my question has to do with the type of trolley that we're looking at purchasing. Is it the same fuel of the one that we're operating right now? And how are we going to fuel? Where are we going to fuel? And how are we gonna fuel these new trolleys?
Mr. Alameda is here and prepared to answer that question.
Wonderful.
Thank you for the question. The two trolleys that we're looking to purchase under this purchase agreement are both identical in model, build, look, and fueling as the ones that we currently operate. So currently, we operate three propane trolleys, and the fueling source is over at the Public Works yard. So everything will operate as it does now. Just will have more capacity and more reliable truck.
So at the south end of Signal is, is where the fueling takes place?
Yeah, we have an agreement in place with a propane provider that comes and fills our, our tank there.
And the background being, we, the previous council had approved an electric trolley, I believe, and the delay in that is impacting the service we can provide. Do I understand that correctly?
Correct. Just to step back a, a little bit, the city used to operate two routes, an A and a B route. And with our existing trolley fleet, we had one go out of service, and the city purchased another propane one, Thousand Oaks, about a year and a half ago to stabilize. We're only operating one route now, and we're barely able to do that because the two of the trolleys are well over their usable life and aren't very reliable. So bringing these two on will stabilize the service and potentially bring back that second route. We did want to go all-electric, that was the intent. Council approved the purchase of an electric trolley. The manufacturer was bought by a larger company, and they're looking at retooling their manufacturing process. So the one we purchased is still going through the queue. That's been delayed by about 12, 14 months, but it's a total unknown if we can buy additional electric ones at this time. And if we were, it would be past the ones that we have online now, still being in operation.
Good thing.
So just, oh, go ahead. So I, just following up on what you just said, I want to make sure I understand it. So we're, we're still in line for a single electric trolley. When that trolley arrives and is in service, we would potentially dispose of Sal or whatever, one of these other trolleys, or we, would we keep them as part of the fleet?
We would keep everything operating. The goal is to restore both the A and the B route, because we're not operating both now. Getting that electric one along with these two supplemental propane ones would allow us to do that.
And have, well, I guess this is for a future agenda item potentially, but, you know, have we looked into, thought about how to transition into a all-electric fleet?
For sure.
That's something we have to discuss as an agendized item.
Yeah, the biggest challenge is the charging capacity.
Ms. Lang?
Yeah, I think my, that my question too was, so we don't have any sense of, because they're re, they're revising their manufacturing, we don't have any sense of when new electric models would be available? Or is it possible that there just wouldn't be any more? Like that they would discontinue trolleys or the electrification of trolleys and that we would potentially be looking at other options if we want to electrify?
So the one that we ordered that, as I mentioned, is still going through, was expected to come this July. Now it's looking like it will be coming February of '26. At this time, they still plan to manufacture electric trolleys, but they want to basically retool. but they want to basically retool how they're put together. They're looking at redoing the chassis and how they're built. So they're basically re-engineering the design from what existed to something new, and that timeline's unknown.
Thank you.
I just wanted to offer that I received four constituent comments of people who used to use the B-line. And they're eager to use the line again, so I'm eager to restart that service. So I, I know my voice has already been registered there, but I think it's a real treasure that we have, and I'd love to see it be its fullest sense. Yep.
And then there is enough money in the, the FTA fund to purchase the electric plus the two?
Well, actually, there, there's some good news on that front. So a, as you know, we brought on a, a new transit supervisor, Anthony Valius, who's introduced the council, and it's with us tonight. But he's been very successful in unwinding a lot of the funding that is available to us that we weren't necessarily obtaining in the past. There's a lot of funding at both the state and county level that we weren't maximizing. So yes, it is true that we have the FTA Article Eight funding, which that's a federal source. Our plan right now is to use its state funding under SB 125 to make the purchases of these used ones. If you look at the budget amendment that outlines the source, that's been approved for this use, and that's what we look to use. But we look to go, going forward, to have more funding available both from the state and the county level. So we're in a, in a good spot for both capital, operations, and doing way more robust maintenance.
And then just one other question. So I, I see here on the invoice that they are, you know, of course, we know they're used, they're 2020s. No warranties or anything like that. Does somebody from the city go to check it out? You know, like your mechanic or whatever person to make sure it's a solid purchase?
Yeah, they are going to be shipping them here, and our mechanic will both check them. But before they go online, they have to go through, it's a pretty robust DOT inspection. So we basically do, for lack of a better term, a pre-DOT inspection to make sure it's going to pass. But these are done on a regular basis, even on the ones that we own. So before it's put into service, it'll, it'll pass all those checks. And if it were to not be serviceable for some reason, it, it would be returned.
Okay, and then with the 2020, do they go like so many, you know, like a car? It's a certain mileage, and then it's like, okay, do you know the mileage and what the longevity is?
Yeah, so both of these, we do know the mileage. One is about 30,000, and one is about 40,000. Keep in mind that we have a trolley right now operating has about 161,000 miles on it. And that's way past its usable life. But the mechanic that we brought on has really worked wonders to, to keep the fleet going forward.
Good to know. Thank you.
That's very helpful. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Rule?
Yeah, so if we were to assume that we had one trolley for each route, and we're buying two, and we get an electric one, we then have three, which would give us an opportunity to potentially either add a new route or do something with a trolley, perhaps trolleying people from where they parked their cars way over there into downtown or something like that. Is that correct? We would have potentially another vehicle to use.
So when the electric one arrives, because one, we have three now, but one's pretty much at the end of its usable life. We'd really have five at that point, the two that we have now.
Okay. Okay.
Backing out the one that's probably going to go offline soon. These two used ones, the electric ones. Anthony, our new transit supervisor, does have some ideas about some supplemental routes that we could do to serve the public better.
That would be really nice. My car has 280,000 miles on it. Go into 300,000.
Ms. Rule, I'm definitely seeing this as a future agenda item, meaning we would want to look at the routes and, and take advantage of this great Ojai service and amplify it.
And our four-by-four square miles, which makes everything very close.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, so we'll take these one at a time. Is that, is that prudent? Okay, so do I have a motion for C? Purchase two trolleys.
I'll make a motion to purchase the two trolleys.
I'll second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Let's move on to D, Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement. I don't know, how do you, how do you pronounce this name? Is it Tripeppy?
Tripeppy Smith, yes, I'm sorry. Forgive me, I'm, I was on the wrong one. We're on D, not, not F. No, I think, I think we're on F.
Oh, I'm sorry. D got approved, sorry, we're on F. My fault, my fault.
That's okay, they're both, they're both Tripeppy Smith items, so it's understandable.
Understood, yep, sorry, we're on F.
Okay.
So I'm the one who pulled F, although I guess Councilmember Lang was also interested in pulling that one. I, you know, looked at the branding that's been produced, and I'm not a fan. That's maybe just personal taste, but I'm perfectly happy with continuing with the city's official brand. I would not rule out seeing a different branding and being interested in that branding, but the, the ones that we've developed that we, that were in front of us, I, you know, I'm, I'm not crazy about the font, I'm not crazy about the colors, and I'm not crazy about the graphic. So that kind of covers the whole thing, right?
All right.
Fair, fair enough. I mean, this, this is a certainly council decision, and, and we would be happy if council wanted to direct us to throw this back and maybe ask for some additional options. You could also, I could bring back a future item with, inform a subcommittee on this topic. I mean, it, or we could just abandon it. Whatever council directs is perfectly fine. We, we spent, we did spend some money. It wasn't a huge amount of money, it was 14,400. You know, and perhaps not all that would be sunk costs that were lost, because maybe there, you know, if you read, I'm sure you did, you know, the, the background, they're, they're trying to pull colors from the existing approved seal, and I think that might be appropriate if there was going to be a different logo. But it's, it's all fine, and, and if council wants us to go through that, we're, we're happy to do that. You guys give us the, the direction, and we'll do that.
Did you have some feedback?
Well, first of all, I, I wanted to say that I really like the idea of having a consistent look and feel for all of our PowerPoints, for all of our, everything that's coming out of the city. This has been something I know I've talked to you about, and it's been really important to me to, to move forward on this. And so I want to thank you for taking the initiative on this. I also wanted to look at, at, you know, I've heard from some constituents who were reluctant to move forward in this specific direction. And, and so I would like to take some time with it, get some feed, some more feedback, and see if this is, if this is the direction that we want to go. I personally like the colors. I think they're friendly, I think they're bright, and I think they pull out colors from the logo or from the, the, the seal. And, and I like this, one of the, the round primary icon. So if, so if it's possible for us to, to perhaps talk about other options or maybe getting another look?
We could bring this back as a future agenda item, and I might just include this as a starting point, and then we can build from there, and this would probably come back sometime in May if that's acceptable to council.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I guess my suggestion would be that if Councilmember Lang wants to potentially team with one other council member and participate in a little guidance on, I'm way underqualified to be that person.
The mayor is a graphic designer.
Well, let me, before we get down there, let me ask the city attorney, would I need to, I, I think, I'm feeling I probably would need to bring that back and put that as an agenda item if they're going to be forming a subcommittee, but I, I don't want some guidance here.
I don't feel the need to be on a subcommittee, but if...
I think it could be an informal working group. So it's, it's continue the item to return with further input from the mayor, Mayor Protam is a working group.
But thank you very much for moving forward with that.
We definitely need a branding guy.
Yes, definitely.
No problem.
You know, I just realized that I wanted to, um, D.
Microphone? Yeah, will you turn your microphone in?
I'm sorry, I was confused when we were polling things, but item D, I wanted to talk about that.
What did you have a question about?
Well, because I see, you know, it's not a huge amount, $5,500 a month, but I did a little, you know, looking into it. And the amount, there's like very limited community input, they're, you know, talking like comments, shares, this and that. And I, I just had a thought, like, could it, to partner with either like Ventura College or Channel Islands with a student who this is their thing, social media, fresh, new, engage them, you know what I mean? You can give them far less, and they would be so grateful, so happy, and maybe somebody to start getting younger people involved, because that seems to be what we all want, and we don't know how to go about. So I thought, could this be a start to do something like that?
So procedurally, are we, are we on, do we want to talk?
Yeah, let's, let's do, I, I'd like to entertain that, that we could bring up talking about D.
I'm okay with that.
It was approved, but council, meeting's still going, so council could discuss it further.
Let's do, let's do.
So we're on, we're on D. A couple things, so I'm, of course, we can do whatever council wants us to do, obviously. So this, this particular amendment just gets us through the end of the fiscal year. You know, we, we transitioned Ms. Revere over into a recreation manager role, and there was a need for some, some, somebody to fill this. I, I was going to bring back to the council in the new fiscal year a comprehensive contract with Tripeppy Smith for the newsletter and for social media management. We could involve an intern in that effort. What we see is we have, we do five posts, up to five posts a week. We ask for a really quick turnaround, we ask for quick revisions. We contact them at night or sometimes on the weekends. You could have a person doing that, but they have infrastructure such that they have somebody on call, they have, they also have a supervising manager. So it's a, it's a team that you get. And it's a bit more robust than just relying on one particular individual. Like the intern concept, which you're speaking of, these are younger people. I think the oldest person on the team outside of the supervisors and the directors is 25. So I feel like we're getting a lot of folks that this is their, you know, that, well, we're, we're tapping into the youth, and I have kids, too, and I know that we all go to our kids when we want to know about anything digital or social media. But, you know, we, we can, we can, we can work.
Because I was just thinking, too, being like somebody from Ojai, you know what I mean? They know, because with, with, there's like zero engagement, the most liked, there was one with, you know, eight likes. People don't share, they don't do any of that, so I, you know, and there's no correspondence back when somebody makes a, a comment.
And we can address that, too. I've learned, and, and maybe you all know this, I, I wasn't aware of this, but you, you can boost your posts, and I've been learning on how that, Mayor Protam, this is your world. Right, right, so we can certainly do that, that can be part of what we request. However, I am also mindful from my own experience, I, I very rarely like or comment on a post from a, an agency or, or an organization. I tend to mostly focus on individuals, but that's, that's my personal. But, I mean, I think that's something that I could, I, that's good constructive criticism, criticism I could definitely bring back to them.
I, I would offer this, working on, well, let's say at schools and things like that, where there, there are feelings like, let's get volunteers to do things. And the, the difficulty that I have found is, they have to be pressed. You have to be able to call the phone person and say, get here, now the phone's not working, and the volunteers don't work well for that. This isn't that, but it, I'm looking at the team right now on their website, and I do see, it is nice to be able to press somebody on a weekend and say, go for it. And I also, of course, yeah, and I also agree, though, that if we say our, our PR strategy, we should come up with targets and say, what's our strategy? What are we trying to do? If it's getting more likes and more shares, that's a strategy that then can, that's what Harvey can implement.
Yeah, that's great.
So that's part of the strategy. Who are you trying to reach? So maybe that hasn't been articulated well enough.
And this would also, sorry to jump in.
No, please, go ahead.
This also might be a good opportunity for a, a subcommittee of city council to give me that type of direction. You guys would like, you know, this is what we want to see.
That's good.
And how we want to see it.
That would be great.
And that's great. Okay.
I'll, I'll just add one more thing, and that is, on another board that I serve on, I am the marketing and outreach director. And trying to get volunteers to post, and I have great volunteers, but trying to get them to post things in a timely manner or like meet deadlines is really hard. And these are all ages, from the twenties up to the fifties, you know, so, so I think when you're paying someone, it really, they have a vested interest in, in doing what we want them to do.
That's true.
And I'm really supportive of looking for interns or volunteers to, to, to help or who want to learn more about how the city works. But I just think that paying someone is the, the only way that we're going to be able to stay on point and to get our work done.
Agreed.
And I think they're doing a good job of being consistent with posting. I notice every time I go on Nextdoor, when I go on Facebook, I notice them, I notice that there are posts coming in from the city that weren't there prior to hiring them. And even when we had someone serving in that role, you know, she was split in all these different directions with events and with all these, with events, with social media, with PR. And, and so I think it, it's helpful right now as we are reorganizing that aspect of staff to have a contracted group in our back pocket.
And they could help us with strategy, not just implementation.
No, I definitely took that as a note, and, and I think they'll be, they're, they're kids, so, you know, they're, they're receptive to constructive criticism.
Yeah. Thank you, I think that...
And just a quick comment, and, and so this is a subset of, you know, what we're talking about is a subset of this, you know, issue, which is that most of the people who are participating in our, you know, commenting on governance tend to be 60-plus. There's plenty that are less than that, but I would love to see more of the, you know, 25 to 50 age range. And so you know, I know it has to be probably another agenda item at some point in time, but I really think at some point in time, we ought to, we ought to look at how do we engage that, that age group in our governance.
That's part of the strategy, so that's, that's a really good one you just threw out right there. That's, look for, look for, hit that target.
And I, you know, I'll just mention that our planning commission now has, you know, two newer individuals who are, I'll guess at their names. I mean, their ages, but I'm gonna, I should probably guess Low for it. But I, you know, they're probably in their 30s somewhere, I give or take. And that's not that usual for us either, and, but it, they're, they're both making fantastic contributions to the dialogue and kind of, you know, spreading our, our, you know, interest level, and they're very thoughtful, so I would love to see more of that engagement from...
I agree 100%.
I'm just gonna, really briefly. So we, I've had communication from constituents over, over, you know, the last year or so about engaging students, you know, and, you know, with the, I'm not sure what it's called now, it's not the Mayor's Council.
Oh, the City of Ojai Youth Council.
City of Ojai Youth Council, you know, potentially even interning kids that have just graduated high school. We have on the Park and Recs, we have a student representative. It seems to me that we, it might be really wonderful to see if the other commissions were open to having a, even if it's a graduate, you know, someone who's, who's here for the summer or, you know, can be their last year in high school, a student representative. And that way to get them involved and to offer some opportunities to, you know, Ojai, Ojai youth. Seems an easy way to do it, as well as potentially interns in city departments. If that, then we can bring this up as an item, if that's a possibility, you know, maybe you have people who'd like to intern in the finance department or the planning department, and if directors were willing to do that, which they may or may not, you know, it, it's, you know, as we always say, free labor, baby, kidding.
As luck would have it, our HR manager is hearing all this, and I see she's writing down notes, so good.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, it's a, it's a possibility. I think it would be wonderful for all parties. It's, it's a... It's a, it's a win-win-win, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think you have direction, that's good.
Yes, thank you.
I'm seeing a card from Elena Daly, but I do not see her in the room anymore, great. And then Mr. Steingold, I see that you want to talk about D and I want to ask you, is it useful? Is it necessary? Is it kind? Is it true? Okay.
I, I think.
That's the rotary, that's the rotary speech thing.
My daughter has her own company, she has sixteen points of contact. Okay, no, I mean email, phone calls, texts. You want to be engaged, you want everybody to be engaged. Does that mean you want responses? You want to have to respond to everybody on different groups and different platforms? You don't. Mr. Harvey, when he first came on board, said he wants all your stuff to go to him first before it goes to different employees. Everything goes through him. I mean, if, right now you have a website. I go on the website. I go, I see Facebook, you have a Facebook page, great. But you can't go on every group. If you go on every group, you could have thirty, forty, fifty, sixty conversations and now you're involved in all of them. And how do you respond? Do you respond to city councillors or do you respond as people? No disrespect. Okay, seriously, I mean, if you had a media person, you're already on, on cable TV, you're on Zoom, you're on Facebook, you're on Nextdoor, you're in the pro, you're in the newspaper, you get emails. I mean, what kind of engagement and back and forth do you want? If you want people to show up, fine. If you want to get constantly inundated with emails that you all have to personally respond to or not, that's fine too, that's your job. But do you really want to have to be on, you put five things on Facebook a week? Fine. It's twenty-five hundred dollars a month. Have one media, if you're gonna have a media person, have one person deal with all of it, deal with the email issues, deal with the Facebook, but not on every group. It'll just, you'll, you'll go crazy. I mean, because you're on Ojai Community and Ojai Social and Ojai this and Ojai that and you're responding, and you're like, who's responding? You want, do you really want to engage people on each comment? I'm sure you don't. Okay, you really don't. Okay, because it's painful. Okay, so that was my, I mean, if you're gonna do it, have a goal, what is the goal? Is the goal is to get people involved? Fine.
That's the strategy.
No, I mean, fine, you want them involved. That means making them knowledgeable. That means giving them stuff they want to get aggravated enough to come down here. Seriously, I mean, that's why people get involved, because they find something, information. Do you really want to have to engaging outside of here? I mean, you see them at lunch, you see them, that's fine, they come to your home, whatever. But you don't want to do it online? Now you're gonna go as a city councillor or as Rachel Lang. I'm just saying, be, please be careful because there are predictable consequences to getting really involved and all, you know, you're on Facebook, fine. If you want somebody, I, I push stuff, stuff onto other groups, fine. But you don't want to, just the advice.
Thank you, Mr. Steingold. We got it, there's a capacity question that we're gonna have to answer.
Well, Ms. Mayor, could I just jump in on it?
Please.
So our, our policy, and I think you all know this, we, so we, it's one-way communication. We're posting information out there for the public to see. And of course, the public is entitled to make a comment or share it or whatever. However, we, we are respectful of people's First Amendment rights and we understand that there's, there's not really a way, as Mr. Steingold points out, to engage. And so we just, we just allow the, the posts and the comments to exist. And sometimes there's a question that's just remaining unanswered and fortunately, um, thanks to all of you, I often hear about that. And you, we're usually often able to find this particular person and email or call them to respond and that's, that's frequently what we do.
Yeah. No, thanks. And these are just, this came up actually in the League of Cities, a very common, a huge issue, it's with social media, it's a really common thing. So I think you have your direction, thank you. Okay, great. So I think we've answered all the consent items, if I see that correctly.
Do we need to approve?
And we, we approved what we needed to approve already, I believe. We pulled D out, do we need to approve it again?
No.
Okay, great.
No, it's approved from before.
Then we're good and we have direction, we pulled E and we have direction to staff on F. All right. So now we're on to discussion, number two, annual schedule for joint city council, city commission joint meetings.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Montgomery will be giving this uh staff report, thank you.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. We have a simple report, there is a need exists to reintroduce our joint meeting schedule for our four city commissions. Staff has uh presented a very simple um schedule set to repeat. Uh, we just had the Historic Preservation Commission joint meeting, so we started with the planning commission, then the arts, and then the parks and recreation, and then historic again. Uh, the second part of this approval requested from you council is that the, uh, we've heard from a few of you that there's a need for a longer joint meeting, so we've recommended starting at four PM, so from four to six PM on a regular council meeting date that uh meets the need of our working agenda within each quarter. Any questions?
Thanks for the clear report. Discussion and questions.
Yeah, I guess. Four o'clock can be difficult for me. But uh, you know, we can work on that and figure out how we fit that.
Thank you. I have no public comments on this item. Do we open up to?
Also no raised hands right now.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? So the, the request for the two hours actually came from the commissions to me and I hope to some of you, that what they're hoping is that they're sometimes asking for more clarity on direction, they do want to report out all of those things and um it seems like it's a great opportunity if we can pull it off, I think it's worth it and that's the hope. Okay?
Yeah, uh, just, I'll just comment completely that the planning commission in anticipation of their meeting with us uh were uh, you know, very intent on having a good discussion about what they were going to use that time for and prioritizing it and that they are you know, somewhat, I think, similar to Historic Preservation, but a little bit different in the, but in the, in their desire to get more direction from us in terms of the role that we want them to play.
Yep.
As they are going through their decision-making process.
I heard that too. And it could be that what Historic Preservation did recently, there was a big discussion to be had, but there is a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee that's going to do that. The direction was to have them do it, that's a great model too. So that, we can always adopt that model as well. If we can't make the four o'clock, then that discussion gets moved off, which is completely fine. Okay? Do I have a motion to approve item two?
I'll move two.
Yes, and will you second?
Will second.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Great, motion passes, thank you. We took three off and now we are on to number four, adoption of a resolution amending the salary schedule to add the classification of human resources risk manager and authorize specialty pay for US gymnastics certificates, certifications rather, for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yes, Mayor, and, and we're just going to allow a brief moment to allow Ms. Rivera and Ms. Holman to join us and we're gonna split this up into two pieces. Um, I think what, we're gonna flip-flop it around a little bit and we're first gonna discuss the gymnastics uh classifications and then we will, or I will, I will, I will take it and discuss the human resources risk manager. So with this uh junction, I'm gonna hand it over to Ms. Holman. Thank you.
Welcome.
My honor.
Yeah.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight we have before you a recommendation to amend the city's salary schedule to authorize specialty pay for recreation employees that hold certain USA gymnastics certifications and to add the classification of human resources risk manager. We're just gonna focus on gymnastics at the moment. Um, as you may remember, last November, the city council directed staff to restore staffing to gymnastics programming and to retain the current gymnastics programming and structure. After evaluating the needs of the recreation department, updating the current job classifications to include specific gymnastics activities provides us the greatest flexibility to ensure that all recreation programming needs are being met. Certifications from USA gymnastics are a requirement to continue to provide gymnastics programming at their current level as well as being necessary as the program continues to grow. Um, we ought, we propose authorizing specialty pay to those employees assigned to gymnastics that hold the required certifications, the recognition of the additional training that they are required to mo, to obtain. Um, per council's direction, we met with staff assigned to gymnastics programming and members of the Ojai Valley Gymnastics Parents Group to keep them apprised of these recommendations and our commitment to continue supporting the gymnastics programs in the future. The rest of the staff report has other information for you, that's the conclusion of my briefing of the gymnastics part of it. At this point, we can either have city manager Ben Harvey take on the rest of the staff report, adding the classification of HR risk manager, or we can question the gymnastics part of it now.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Holman. Maybe perhaps it'd be a good moment to take any questions from the council on the gymnastics component and then we can move into the other part.
Yeah, I did have a question. So the gymnastics staff, that you, you said they were apprised of this work, are they approving, are, are they, are they happy with the work and they've agreed on that dollar amount, more or less? I mean, in other words, do you have consensus there?
I, I assume so, they, we met with them and they seemed pleased with it and they seemed pleased with their involvement in the process and for the continuing process in the future.
Understood. Any other questions?
Yeah, uh, so the, the staff members who are impacted are, are going to be spending time uh working through those certifications?
They already have them.
They have them. They already have them.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they have had them and they continue to do their continuing education to continue to get them as they expire.
It's a response to an existing situation is how I'm seeing it. Okay. Great.
Okay, well, um, why don't I take on the next part of it?
Yes.
And I'll ask Ms. Holman just to remain and Ms. Rivera, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for being here.
Um, okay, uh, this next uh item, a little bit different, but the, the council um is the body that approves changes to the city's uh salary schedule and so here we are implementing a proposed new position, one of human resources and risk manager. Prior to this, you, you may remember, well, didn't we have somebody in that role? Yes, yes, we did. We had somebody uh as a management analyst who was filling in that capacity, you may recall, Mr. Petner was in that role. Um, however, we've never had until in, in recent history at least, at least certainly in the time that I've been here, somebody who's qualified to serve as a human resources and a risk manager. The incumbent that we have, and sorry, I'm gonna talk about her, she's sitting right here, I know she's alive and she's with us, um, is a Calpers retired annuitant from the uh city of Camarillo who is willing to come out of retirement in order to serve again as a full-time city employee for the city. You may recall a similar situation with Ms. Palmer who came out of retirement to become our full-time public works director. So it's a fortuitous opportunity where we can take advantage of somebody who has done this work before in a regional city, Camarillo. Uh, we're kind of becoming Camarillo uh east, if you will, but that's okay, with a lot of expertise there, we want to take advantage of it. Um, but this also kind of fits with what I'm really trying to address, which is continued professionalization, um, reducing our risk and exposure, uh adhering to best practices and it's a lot easier and more effective to do that with somebody who has done the job, who knows the, knows the work, who has the context versus somebody that I may have to, and this is not a knock on Mr. Petner, he did a standing job, but there was a lot of on, on the job training that had to take place because it, you know, he just wasn't familiar with, with all the roles and responsibilities. This position fits into our existing family of jobs where we have IT manager, um, we have uh the accounting manager, so it's, it's the, it's the manager family of jobs where this would be going, it's in the same bandwidth. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that.
So um, I do have a, a couple of questions and it, and I'm cheating because I already talked to our city manager about this earlier today, but my support of, of what we're doing with gymnastics and um, and I have a great deal of concern about exposure to liability arising out of especially the higher level gymnastics athletes and that we are taking on the primary role of having the person who's instructing on the safety, you know, protocols, so if something screws up, we're the employer of the person who screwed up. And it can be very expensive um to resolve a claim arising out of that type of an accident. And what the city manager explained to me today, so I just want to make sure everybody, you know, kind of is in the loop, is that we are going through a, a very serious process in terms of drawing up our insurance situation, including an additional level above and beyond the standard insurance that is gonna uh, you know, give us kind of a higher liability limit on uh what we can pay in, in terms of a claim. And my support is very much dependent upon the fact that we put all of that in place.
And if I could just expound on that, uh, we're actually doing three things. So we, we, you know, pursuant to council direction, we met with the insurance authority and by the way, the, this classification is the primary liaison to the insurance authorities, you might guess, as the risk manager. They understood council's concern, they also wanted to point out to us, and I explained this to council member Whitman today too, that, you know, yes, gymnastics does have risk, but, you know, we also have member agencies that have boxing and, you know, other high-risk sports. There is a, an umbrella, an additional umbrella policy that we could purchase and we are looking into that. The other thing we're going to do is they said, why don't you have a local gymnastics third party like, like UCSB, you know, the, the director of their program come over and look at your operation and give you any suggestions as to things that you might consider and we're doing that as well. So, and we, of course, we're gonna keep the uh city gymnastics employees and the parents group involved of this and, and Ms. Holman would be heading up this, well, she is heading up this effort and would continue to move this forward. Thank you.
Um, yeah, so, so I was aware that you were taking those steps and it was pursuant to our uh council direction, so that's good. So I, I absolutely support this. Um, and, you know, we do have insurance and I'm glad that we're shoring it up. Um, you know, that's why we have insurance, but an umbrella policy is not a bad idea either. Um, so, yeah, I, I support this one hundred percent and would make a motion um that we uh move forward with this, both, both the um, the new hire and the uh classification for the gymnastics instructors, yes.
Let me take your second, but then we, we just want to open it to public comments online.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I know, it's just going so well.
Yeah, 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 okay, go for it, so sorry.
Mr. Montgomery, is there anybody online?
We have no raised hands on Zoom, Mayor.
I have no cards.
And no cards, we'll just give our Zoom participants an extra moment if they need to raise their hand. As a courtesy and.
Sorry to interrupt you. Please continue.
I, I just wanted to thank both staff.
Yes.
For, in the gymnastics program that I see in the audience and also staff here for working to really resolve this issue in a way that is a win-win for everybody and I hope that uh the gymnastics staff feels that way and the parents group. Um, and I applaud what, what our uh city manager and team have done to uh rectify the situation and make it safe for all of us. So, yay you, everybody.
I'll second that. Yeah, any discussion?
And I just wanted to add too that our gymnastics staff is nodding their heads for the people who can't see, they're nodding their heads and we're getting approved, nods of approval. And so I feel confident in moving forward with this direction and thanks staff and also welcome to Ojai. We are so grateful that you came out of retirement to join us, we've heard amazing things about you um from other Camarillo uh annuitants and, and so, yeah, so I feel really, I, I feel very secure having you as a part of our team.
Second that. Okay, Mr. Montgomery, you want to do a roll call on this?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mayor Protam Lang with a second by Mayor Gilman to approve as recommended.
Actually, Western rule.
It was backward, that's backwards, yeah.
Yes.
No worries.
Motion by council member Rule with a second by Mayor Gilman.
Thanks.
Pardon me. Roll call, council member Rule.
Yes.
Council member Meng.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Council member Whitman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. We are on our last item, number six, ordinance adding and repealing certain sections of the Ojai municipal code related to regulations of movable tiny houses. Mr. Seibert, welcome.
Just want to note, it's seven sixteen, seven sixteen.
I know, I, I'm like, what is happening there? It's so crazy.
I'll just take a moment for the PowerPoint to come up.
Thank you.[1757.78]
We want new branding on that when it comes through.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm kidding. It's beautiful.
All right. So good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lucas Seibert. I'm the Community Development Director here for the City of Ojai. The item you have before you tonight is one in which you have discussed previously, but not since 2023. And the reason for that, and I'll, next slide, please. Before I go into the history, I just want to give you some kind of some photos of of examples of what this this tiny home or tiny houses piece looks like. It includes fairly small, compact, not more than 440 square feet in size, tends to be a story and a half, not more than 14 feet in height. And here's some examples of it with deck, without deck, on chassis, on foundation. Next slide, please. Ah, history. This has really been discussed since 2016 when social media and and certain programs came about regarding tiny homes. And that discussion then bled into council having conversations and the community having conversations that then led to planning commission, city council involvement in 2018. Ultimately not moving forward with anything. It was kind of shelved at that point for a couple of years and then brought forward again through kind of goals and priorities by council in 2020, and then led to a two-year startup pilot program, although it does is October 21st. It's actually 2021 when that went forward, not 2022. The interesting thing is, is through this pilot program, aside from other tiny home ordinances that have gone forward, this was a a two-year pilot program just to kind of get an understanding of the impacts and the the way in which this would be used and kind of massaged through the city. And the limitations were two years, not more than 10 that would be accepted and approved each of those those years. And then after the two years, an evaluation as to whether or not to go further, modify, kind of lessons learned from that two years. So in 2023, when it, when the, right before the program ended, staff brought forward kind of the lessons learned piece. And at that point, council had said, yeah, let's take this through the entire process. And what that means is developing a draft ordinance, kind of hearing from the community, going and vetting it through planning commission, which we have done, and then bringing something forward. And that's where we're here tonight. Next slide, please. The pilot program first, outcomes and lessons, as I had said before. But what I didn't mention was the fact that there were two tiny homes that were that have been developed and currently exist and are sighted in our city. So an average one a year. But there's a reason for that. The process that we had in place is cumbersome, required a lot of of I guess we were calling it red tape at the time, still is. And we looked at ways in which to remove some of that red tape, but then also recognize that there may still need to be some of that red tape or even considerations of not moving forward with certain things just based on logistics to a certain degree. Barriers to the entry, third-party ANSI inspection requirements, that's kind of a an interesting piece. That was really the biggest hurdle that each of these individuals, in fact, we had applications that were submitted, and then they would immediately just withdraw the application. They they sensed and started doing the research and realized that the hurdle was not insurmountable because we've had two, but extremely difficult to navigate that process. And then the other one is lack of specific guidelines due to being grouped in with the ADUs. So remember those two. Continued interest from the residents post-program. I've already checked in with staff. We've got eight people on a, not a formal waiting list, but we know of eight people that are interested in moving forward with this. So it's one of the reasons why it's being brought forward tonight. Next slide, please. So recommended modifications. And it's, we've got five points here, and really what it boils down to is the ordinance, when it was brought forward in 2021 as a pilot program, it was folded into the ADU ordinance. And really what that meant was it was an either or. So you either have an ADU or you have a tiny home or tiny house, not an ADU and a tiny house. What this ordinance is recommending, and it's been vetted through the community and through planning commission on two different occasions, is kind of separating the two. So now it's a new ordinance that's being brought forward as a part of the discussion tonight for consideration. Additionally, there was feedback from the two individuals that brought forward the tiny homes and ended up getting them sighted. And one was the expense for the pads, so trying to reduce some of those costs. While may seem incremental, each of those pieces could be the wavering on whether or not to move forward with it. Additionally, removal of requirements for the third-party ANSI, which I had mentioned previously, that was the the probably the most significant hurdle in terms of inspections for pre-built tiny homes. What we found in doing the research and reaching out to these manufacturers is that they already have third-party or they have ANSI inspectors doing the inspections throughout. And not only that, but they'll do surprise inspections to ensure compliance. So it's not like, hey, on Tuesday, we're going to be doing inspection. It could be at any point in time. And then allowing tiny homes to be built onsite. So before everything had to be sighted, meaning it was really on chassis or you're craning them in. Bringing them in. Here we're talking about potential stick built, which then leads you into having third-party ANSI qualified and it's having those individuals, those specialized individuals out doing the inspections. It's not a regular building inspector going out doing the inspections. These are, these people are qualified and have the knowledge and and education. And then the third is allowing land leasing opportunities. It was partially brought up by this body in 2023. We did some research and then vetted it through planning commission as well as the community certainly weighed in on that as well. And you're seeing that built into the program brought forward tonight. Next slide, please. So additional barriers that weren't mentioned were deck requirements barrier, 80 square feet. Again, it's an expense piece. Is it considered to be excessive? Proposed alternative is just to eliminate the deck altogether. One of the reasons that in having conversations with the planning commission and some community members is it's not, it's, we're no longer looking at an ADU or a tiny home. We're looking at an ADU and a tiny home. And as long as there's enough space, the deck may not be necessary. It's no longer a requirement. It's kind of a luxury, an added item. The second point was one that was not mentioned, and it's not included in the ordinance, but had quite a bit of discussion and it's a barrier and it's the connection installation as being an expense and somewhat invasive. There's some opinions there. Proposed alternative to consider. Now, mind you, I want to make this very clear. It's not in the ordinance currently. Compostable toilets as an idea. Let that sink in. Next slide, please. Tiny homes as an example, we've just got some just some visuals just so you can kind of get a an understanding. It's typically very tight, kind of Tetris in terms of how you you make that space work and operate. None of these photos are taken from the two that we have in play. I'm a little bit protective of the two that we have. So these are just examples. Next slide, please. So this is really kind of additional information as it relates to the ANSI inspectors. Initially, when we started doing the research, we had assumed that there wouldn't, there wasn't anybody that was local, but what we found is in fact there are. After doing a little bit of a deeper dive in terms of some of that research, these are the two companies that are localized and would be able to do that kind of third-party inspection for that stick built option. Next slide, please. So with that, what we're recommending tonight, staff's recommending is to receive the information, open the matter for public comments, and then consider introducing the draft ordinance, establishing the regulations and guidelines for the movable tiny homes. So with that, if council has any questions, I can certainly.
I just respond to say I did inspect one of the homes that are here, and it looks very much like the photographs, meaning high-quality, very interesting, livable, everything that those photos did show. So those aren't just the best. There's also a good one here. And I will say I've used compostable toilets in India and they are perfectly fine. So that's my, that's my experience. I'll offer that. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I have a couple. So 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 the ANSI compliance that's done if you're manufacturing in a factory, let's say, that compliance carries through when it's delivered.
Yes, and the confirmation on that is really a sticker.
Okay, great. And then as far as having an ADU plus a tiny home, is there any lot size constraints on that or?
No.
Okay, great.
I will say this, we did have quite a bit of discussion with planning commission on on what sort of range that would look like. And I think what we ended up arriving at is if it fits, it fits. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, yeah, that that sounds reasonable. I think you guys did a a great job in in moving forward after our last discussion and and making it possible. And, you know, it is it is time for people to start grappling with compostable, you know, with compost toilets. It just really is time. So.
I would just like to mention, if there is an interest interest with council bringing in additional information to kind of get to a comfort level and understanding how it operates and the disposal and that stuff, we've already vetted that through planning commission, so we would just simply bring back some of that information and just verify and clarify. And I do believe that there is a representative here tonight that could probably speak on that as well, just to kind of start the conversation.
Yeah, when I worked at Williams College, they had a building and, you know, they put in a compostable toilet and the undergrads lined up to use it. They really wanted to see how how it worked.
Crazy kids.
Crazy kids, really.
To answer the question, because we're in question session here, the the way in which it was presented to planning commission, it's an either or, not a, hey, guess what? We're moving towards this. There's no other option. It's it's an option. It becomes an option at that point.
And and you're right. I mean, as it stands now, to hook into the sewer system is quite expensive, even though that may be changing now that HCD has taken that over. But as it stands now, that's gone through the courts and.
It's a significant expense.
It's a significant expense and it's ongoing. So anyway.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Yes.
I just have one question. So if you could have an ADU and a tiny home on one property, parking still isn't parking still isn't an issue?
So here's the fun thing about this.
Let's hear it.
This is the fun thing. Right now, the ordinance does not have a requirement for parking on site, but if the council wants to require a parking space onsite, covered or uncovered or whatever standard that you're looking for, that is open for discussion. Absolutely. I will say when it was vetted through planning commission, they grappled with it as well, but then offered the recommendation not to pursue it.
And I'll just add that the element of no parking requirement stems from the fact that the start is another flavor of ADU.
Right.
And state law prohibits parking for ADUs, parking requirements for most ADUs, and now I think all ADUs. So that got maintained over, but obviously movable tiny homes pulling them out of the ADU context that could be put back if council so chose.
That's very interesting because logically you might argue they're the same thing, roughly speaking. So why, if you can't have parking in one, why the other? Any other questions for staff?
Yeah.
Yes.
I want to understand the, if it fits, it fits. Comment a little bit, but my starting point is I want to understand that you can have an ADU and then you can have a tiny home. I have a kind of a general understanding that there's a law that allows you to have an ADU and but it doesn't allow you to have two ADUs.
Unless you're multifamily.
Or the second ADU is a junior ADU.
Right.
Because there's flavors.
It's different. Yes.
So is that? Is it, are we treating a tiny home as a junior ADU or the equivalent or how?
No, junior ADU would be attached.
What are we doing conceptually in terms of saying, okay, you can have this type of structure and then you can also have this type of structure?
Excellent question. Let's just, this sounds very familiar to planning commission discussion of almost a year ago. So you can have a junior ADU, you can have an ADU. The junior ADU has to be attached to the house, and there's a limitation, no more than 500 square feet in terms of adding square footage, but the overall square footage can't exceed 500. An ADU can be attached or detached. The the method by which you do that really depends on the room that you have within the residence or the property in in question. Even more importantly are also the setback requirements and the height restrictions that go into play here, depending on how it's oriented. Now, I will admit, the ADU law changes as the wind blows, and what they're doing really, from what I can tell from the state, is they're looking at how a how cities are restricting it and then figuring out ways to pull back those restrictions. It's it's like cat, it's like cat and mouse essentially. Not a bad thing, but if you're trying to understand how to regulate it and and tell the community and you're telling the community one thing and then you realize it's actually another, the ADU piece, that's that's kind of the the moving target. It can be attached, it can be detached. You have setbacks, you have you have a square footage maximum, 800 or 1200, depending on the scenario. And that's maximum, and it has to be allowed. The way in which the the tiny home piece works in terms of what we're looking at here, it's a 440 square foot maximum. The setbacks are the same as what we're looking at for ADUs. So it's four feet for rear, four feet for side. The height limitation is not more than 14 feet. What we're finding with these is that the height limitation, while ADUs have a height of up to 16 feet, what we found is that most of these ADUs end up being 14, even on chassis, and it's taken from great.
Tiny homes, you mean?
What did I say?
ADU twice. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. That's the interchangeable piece. We're we're trying to to separate it.
Understood.
Okay, so we have an we have our own distinct ordinance. We're proposing our own distinct ordinance for a tiny home. And the only restrictions to somebody building one of those would be that that fits within the setbacks and the lot coverage and all of those things that would normally apply.
Correct.
So.
As well as, as well as. So for instance, just to add on to that, another layer that isn't necessarily baked into this ordinance, but already exists and it's something we'd be considering, and that is any mature trees, so for instance, oaks or sycamores. Those would also be in consideration as well.
Right. So it's almost the ability to do it as a matter of right, but you've got to fit everything that is presented.
Correct. It's a, you're you're basically checking a number of of boxes, which is what we were doing before. The biggest, the biggest check was the third-party ANSI piece, and that was one that was it took some finessing and didn't quite understand it until I had a resident who was the first of our of our tiny homes bring a PowerPoint presentation and kind of walk me through what he had to go through. And I was like, that's, that feels excessive considering.
So my biggest reservations about the ADU program. I think ADUs are great, especially if they're affordable. They've all been called affordable by law.
By design.
But that doesn't keep somebody from building a, you know, 800 square foot ADU and charging 6,000 a month for somebody to rent it. So.
Yeah, it's typically market rate. Right. Market rate, but we get to count them as affordable.
Right.
All per state law.
And I guess, so we're not, I know we're not talking about ADUs tonight. I would love at some future point for us to look at how we can bake in more affordability, you know, as a city adopting. I wouldn't think HCD would be mad at us if we were insisting on more affordability, but how, you know, I don't know how the mechanism for doing that.
So if you're, am I, are we in Q and A here or are we in discussion?
We're still in Q and A. We haven't had a public comment yet.
Responding to your question regarding ADUs, deed restrictions are not allowed. We're not allowed to place a deed restriction on ADUs.
Let me jump in on what, that is exactly right, but an option we can take a look at. As we know, we're coming back next time with a further discussion of our goals and our tactics. One of the goals set was affordable housing. A tactic could be looking at incentives to increase affordability. One of the options in that front could be saying above the state law minimums, which we cannot require affordability, above those state law minimums in return for affordability. Details is not tonight's agenda item, but that's something we're planning to bring back as a conversation to have.
Okay, it's useful. Ms. Lang?
Yeah, I had, I had actually that exact same question and one thing I was going to.
And one thing I was going to see is if, if there would be any way that we could, you know, in addition to bringing that back for a future conversation. If there was any discussion or has been any discussion about like expediting permits or doing something for a guarantee of, 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 not just affordability, but like low income or very low income rentals. Is there any, has there been any discussion about?
Not with planning commission.
That's something that we could do though.
Yeah.
And that's also part of our plan. We haven't yet got to planning commission, but that's what we plan to bring back as part of that.
Affordable housing goals and tactics. Let's not lose that potential tactic.
Right, because this is, I mean, that's the goal of this whole program was to increase our affordable housing stock.
Yes.
And then one, just one quick question with the, the size, is there a limit to the amount of occupants that you can have?
Not that I've seen.
Okay. So you could have a family of five or whatever, if that works for them.
If you feel like you can fit five into a.
Throwing out a number.
They're really small.
Right? Oh, absolutely. But you don't, you know?
Yeah.
I believe the fire code has certain limitations as well. We'll confirm with fire.
I think that's probably a good point. I'll, I'll get back to you on the number. I'm, I haven't seen a limitation because there's access and ingress egress and typically through the windows. So it's.
Great. So let me open it up to public comments. Oh, more. Okay. Okay, sure.
So I know it's a really small sample size.
Okay.
But have there been complaints by neighbors about the installation of a tiny house, you know, next door in the neighborhood?
Not that we're tracking. Yeah, no. Somewhat surprising, I'll have to admit, given that it's the first two.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have some history of people complaining about trailers.
Yes.
And, you know.
In the public right of way and otherwise.
Typically like because it's in the front of the house or whatever, but this is a different animal.
You probably drive by one many, many times and you don't realize it's there because it's, it's on a very public street. But it's, it's so well done. It looks like it should be there.
I've been in one.
Yeah. So the other interesting piece and could be part of the reason why we haven't seen really any complaints on them is one of the requirements in this ordinance, this draft ordinance, is that those units have to be really kind of in the back of the property, not front and center. That is not allowed, at least through this ordinance. So.
Ms. Rule, please.
Yeah, so even, so you have two, two scenarios. Basically, one could be an empty lot, right? Where you're going to put it rather than build, because that's incredibly expensive or whatever. You want to rent out your, your land and someone's going to put on, you know, a tiny home. Is there any limit to, so it's an empty lot and one person brings on a tiny home and you know, then their mom comes or whatever. And they want to bring on another tiny home. Is it one per lot regardless of whether or not you have a main building?
Yes.
Okay.
One lot requires a, a main building for single family. For multifamily, you're allowed to have two. And multifamily would include your R2, your R3 zones. R3, there's not a lot of R3.
Okay, so you're talking, your zones, but not necessarily built out. It's, it's what the code would allow, not necessarily built out.
What, what it allowed, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. And then I certainly. Thank you for mentioning the oaks and the sycamores. I think that's something that we should consider for sure. Would you, you've been to Mesa, right? Would you consider those to be tiny homes?
Hmm, no.
And why not?
Those feel like RVs. Or I'm sorry, those feel like camper trailers.
Those feel like camper trailers?
Yes.
Okay.
From a design standpoint, you're looking for consistency with the main residence here. Not necessarily the exact same design, but consistency. So for instance, if there's a Spanish style home. We're not looking for a modern style design.
So, so there are design requirements to this?
Yes.
You're saying the Mesa homes, you would call them camper trailers? I'm, I'm not sure we're talking about the same thing. Maybe we are. They look like, they look like homes. They look like there's 10 homes in a semicircle.
So they look like RV trailers?
No.
Or they look like?
They look like tiny homes.
Maybe I'm confusing.
Yeah, they look like tiny homes and I think they're on a pad.
They looked very similar to what you were showing. Yeah.
No, it's okay. I'm just, just so we don't go down the wrong road. But they, they're, they're classified as tiny homes. Mesa calls them tiny homes and they were brought in as tiny homes. That's a county property.
Yeah, it's county property. I was just curious.
East End, right?
Yeah, on Gorham.
It's up Gorham.
Yeah, not, not far.
They might be taller than the height requirement, but they're.
They look like very big tiny homes.
They look very similar to what you showed.
I'm curious.
I don't know. Maybe I'm looking at something different.
It's okay.
I was looking at something a few weeks back.
That's fine.
Maybe not the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Summers is holding up a picture of what they look like.
Uh, yeah, that's not what I remember.
No, I didn't think so. That's okay.
I, I think these would qualify as tiny homes. I know it's tiny for the public, but it's available at Mesa's website.
They're fancy inside.
Yeah, they're lovely.
Any other questions?
Um, no, let's move on and we can come back and discussion if, if I need to. Thank you.
Great. Let's start with Daniel. Is your last, is it Griffiths? Thank you. Please come forward. Good to see you.
Hello? My name is Daniel Griffiths. I am the owner of Venture Tiny Homes. Thank you so much for letting me come and talk. I got to be a part of talking with Lucas about a bunch of the things that have gone on. I actually am the one that built the two tiny homes that were permitted and placed here. And have had a great relationship with the owners as we've walked through the permitting process and figured things out. So I too have a list of people in the Ojai community who are looking to do tiny homes, very excited about it. As I've heard you guys speaking even tonight, it seems like you guys are excited about affordable tiny, affordable homes. And just providing opportunities for people to place additional dwelling units on their property. There are a lot of confusion. There is a lot of confusion in the terms. And this is something that we've found out along the way. ADU is an umbrella term. Tiny home literally means 400 square feet, 440. Sometimes it's on wheels, sometimes it's not. What they're proposing is for a tiny home on wheels. It can be taken off the wheels and set down, but it actually is DMV certified and it does have an ANSI certification on it. It is really exciting to have this as an, as a, an option for people. When talking about affordability, even our most expensive tiny homes that we build, the absolute elite top of the line. Come close to about $200,000 after everything is said and done, installed, placed there for a 400 square foot home that someone could live in. That is built at a very high quality level. Our more standard models are anywhere from 80 to $120,000. And when you think of that as like what the rents are, you're looking at closer to $2,000 a month cap. I mean, people aren't spending much more than that to live in something so small. But it is, it is exciting to talk about affordable homes. I am happy to be a resource if you have more questions. I don't have much more to say other than thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill Miley, please.
Hello.
Hi.
Moveable tiny houses are trailers. I have been consistent about this subject. They are inappropriate for Ojai. They are inefficient in space because they have limited space. They're claustrophobic, in my opinion. Costly by square footed measurement and will, without deck requirements, accumulate outside the structure much of people's stuff as there is no effective storage inside. They may be cute and in the past, they've been talked about as being cute. So are baby alligators. Check out the Tumblewee Tiny Home site. They've been around for years in Colorado. I gave you the link. Those are $90,000 and more. About five years ago, I tried to encourage the then city councils throughout the housing ordinance, supporting park homes. And turned down tiny houses. Park homes have a maximum of 399 square feet, full ceiling, kitchen, bathroom, bedroom, living room. All of it. And today, Lake Casitas is purchasing them for tourism at about 60, 80,000 dollars. They arrive on wheels with the empty tote. What appears to be slipped into this ordinance is allowance of two on a site. The sales tactic used by retailers, this trashes Ojai, in my opinion. Trailer parks were developed for a reason. No trailer lots and residential zones, in my opinion. This bugs me so much that I misspelled the word residential in the email and I left it there. Okay, if you approve this, we will potentially get up to two on any approved site. A home with a minimum of 190 square feet on the first floor. An option for composting toilet, which, which dries out the waste. But no mention of how the toilet's used compost will be disposed of. Maybe the city hall could have a receptacle for waste. Or is it just garden fertilizer? Waste disposal should be a separate item on another agenda. Pooping goes on all day in community. That's why we have waste systems. Okay. Tiny houses on wheels have a purpose travel. Goodbye, good luck, good travel. Allowing a tiny home to be constructed on the site is problematic, can go on for months. Oh, I haven't got around to it. And then it ends, Ojai does not need tiny houses on wheels. They need park homes.
We've got it, Mr. Miley. Thank you. Anything online, Mr. Montgomery?
Mayor, we have no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay.
Is there anything that you could clarify for us, Lucas?
Just quickly. And it's something I mentioned and kind of in the discussion, the Q and A that we were having earlier. In reference to the two units or the two tiny home units that would be allowed, yes to multifamily, no to single family. Majority of the areas within Ojai are sing, are single family. The areas, the zoning areas that I mentioned before, the R2, the R3, the RI, or the RO, those are all multifamily. Aside from that, it would be one.
And the limit would be two on those or?
Limit would be two. It's specified as two, not, oh, hey, the square footage. If you can, if you can fit it within the parameters that we had talked about earlier, then it would be two.
Okay, great. Thank you. And you're just talking about setbacks, four feet.
Setbacks, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a few comments. I, this is an extreme example, but I think most people who have spent time driving to and from Ventura, it may not be as noticeable now. But in Casita Springs, there's a lot where they've got like eight, 10 by 10 structures. And I'm not even sure, you know, what they're for, but maybe they were. But I want to make sure. I'm, I'm, I'm really supportive of the tiny home concept, but I want to make sure that we do it right. And I don't want to have, you know, a property that's densely populated with multiple tiny homes. I love the idea of being able to spread our affordable housing in 400 square foot increments around the community as opposed to plopping and then, you know, a huge number of units in one neighbor.
Can I give you, can I give the council kind of an example of a scenario that could play out? And the way in which this ordinance as drafted wouldn't allow the scenario as it would play out. So let me give you the ADU scenario. Multifamily, someone comes in and like, hey, I want to do, I could, I want to do my two ADUs on site. And we're like, okay, figure it out. They come back with two ADUs and they're on top of each other. ADU law allows that. Scenario with a tiny home. They come in and say, hey, I want to do my two, I already have my two ADUs that I've done that are two story. I now want to do my two tiny homes. And we say, great, show us how you're going to make that work. And they come in with a two story. What's our response as this ordinance is drafted?
Too high.
Correct. So 14 feet is a, is a height limitation makes it so you can't stack them. So.
And they're limited to two.
Correct.
Okay.
Two in terms of setbacks.
Only in a multi-unit, only in a zone that is, that is multifamily, the zone multifamily, which is not too many. I mean, we're mostly zoned single family.
We're mostly zoned single family, but there are areas that are.
One conversation.
Yeah, there are areas that are multifamily. So.
Ask your question to Lucas.
I was just curious, so you could have two ADUs and two tiny homes, so a total of four?
Potentially for multifamily, yes. On top of the density that's already existing.
Yes.
And that wouldn't change the property to a, a multifamily zoned property if it's a single, okay. So even though someone would be renting out an ADU and a tiny home and living in their main home, it's still.
Yeah, so if someone, just to clarify that question, and so if someone came in and said, hey, I have a single family residence. I already have built an ADU and on top of that, I have a junior ADU. My property is multifamily. We'll say, no, it's not. It's still zoned, a single family. So now you, you're just not allowed to do more than one tiny home.
The zoning map remains the zoning map. R1 zones, R01, R0 half, et cetera. Single family zones, whatever amount of ADUs you can fit per state law, one movable tiny home. The multifamily zones, R3, R4, R, et cetera. You can have whatever amount of units you're allowed by multifamily zoning, plus two movable tiny homes. Plus whatever amount of ADUs you're allowed by state law.
And it's up to, I think that's the important piece to note here is that you're trying to fit it onto the site and maybe only one fits.
Ms. Ming, you?
Well, I'm just trying to girl math for the sake of girl math. So with like a house, like how big of a, a lot would a house, would a residential home have to have to fit the maximum?
What might be helpful is that when this returns, depending on what happens tonight, we could bring, we did this for planning commission. It was kind of a good exercise to, to go through some different scenarios on the square footage and using some real examples. I mean, obviously we'll take addresses off, but we'll use some real examples.
That would be useful.
So just, I'm sorry. I'm, uh, I would really like to have kind of the public have a chance to jump up and say whatever it is they want to say. I get the sense that the board, that our council is pretty, you know, enthusiastic, supportive of moving forward in some way. So my thought is that it would be great if we brought back, you know, a couple of issues. So that then the public will still get, you know, meeting one and meeting two on the actual ordinance. And, and get some warning of that for tonight. I guess I'm assuming that we're not going to reject the idea out of hand.
Can I jump in really quick? There's nothing that stops the council if the council wants to have a workshop in between the first and second read, if you like. We, we're happy to do that if that would provide some comfort.
That's interesting. I, I just have one question about the, on, on the composting toilet, you have it listed as a proposed alternative. So what you're, tell me if I'm understanding you right, Mr. Seabird, that you would say, when you have, sorry, when you say there's a barrier to, to the sewage. We can leave it as is until we explore this compostable issue at another time? Yeah, because you're, you're proposing this, we don't have to take them both together. We can come back on that. Okay. Because that seems like a more complicated issue.
Yes. Well, it sounds like a great idea. I think just understanding all the nuances with it.
Right. Seeing some examples, that kind of stuff would be great.
So the idea is that anything that was. So the idea is that anything that was, uh, would be approved before we figure out the compostable part is going to have to be a connection to the sewer.
Correct.
I'm confused as to what we need to figure out about the compostable toilet.
Well, I was, I'm trying to, no, I hear what you're saying. I'm gauging, I'm gauging the, possibly the crowd here, but I was trying to see if, since we have the expertise here on, you know, the qualifications on how big they can be and all of that kind of stuff. We don't have a lot of experience with, or I want to hear otherwise. Do you, how, how confident do you feel about that option? Mr. Seibert, I guess that's a real question.
Can I ask, can I ask one more question? Before you respond to that? Because I'm also aware that we have, uh, single family houses here that aren't on sewer, that are on septic. And so could you, in, while you're responding to this question about the compostable toilets, can we also talk about the difference between septic, or if that's an option, as opposed to compostable?
At a high level, the difference between like septic versus sewer versus compostable toilet, at a high level. And mind you, I can get you more information to, at least so that you're, you feel educated about and informed about the, the differences. Septic is, um, is all underground and typically done through something called leach, leach fields. We all kind of understand that. The only differ, so it's fine and dandy as long as it doesn't rain, but the problem is, is when it rains, it tends to then overflow, which then creates some issues. Uh, compostable toilets are completely enclosed, from what I can tell. I mean, I don't have direct experience with it, it's just the, the stuff that we presented to planning commission. Um, and maybe Daniel, um, could speak on that a little bit too, he's, he's more the resident expert on it. But the, the way in which they're managed, it's, it sounds like it's an infrequent basis versus the, the, um, the septic, which that only needs to be cleaned out every, every few years. So. Versus sewer, we all know sewer.
I, I would like Daniel actually to.
Yeah, Mr. Whitman has come up.
To speak to, um, you know, if there are standards, you know, I don't know, but, yeah.
Tell us about the projects and how they're working.
The, which?
The compostable toilets.
Okay. The, first of all, the, the concept behind proposing compostable toilets came about because a few of the people that approached me to have tiny home built had a property where the only place that they could put it was across, across the stream. And there was no way of running to the sewer line. Because of the elevation of the, the stream and where they were putting, they also weren't allowed to put a septic tank. And so we had brought this up as an option to people who couldn't connect to the sewer or weren't allowed to put in a septic tank. Not as an option of like, you can choose one of three, whichever one is cheapest. But the, the concept being, this is the third and final and only option for some people. Um, because there are a lot of people in Ojai who have larger properties and the inability to connect to the sewer or a pumping system to bring it four hundred feet was astronomical price. The concept behind the composting toilet is that our, our tiny homes are built about two to three feet off of the ground. So all of the, the sewer, all of the drainage system is raised above the ground. And then it connects to the main sewer or whatever sewer you're going to at about sixteen inches off the ground. With that being said, there are composting toilet units that sit separate from the tiny home itself. It is not just a toilet that goes inside the bathroom. Meaning that your waste doesn't stay inside, there's no smell, there's no actual bio-organics going on. Um, but rather, it's drained out like a normal toilet would have been into a tank that is electronically turned and, and turned into compost that in the capacity of a tiny home with just one bathroom, um, that composting toilet would need to be changed every couple of months or changed or emptied. And by the time you would go to empty it, it would be a small amount of waste that would be put into a garden. Again, the capacity of waste in a, in this scenario, even if everyone in Ojai put in a tiny home, only a small fraction would need a composting toilet. And that small percent would only produce a little bit of compost. So it is, is more presented as an, as an alternate, not as an alternative, but as a last resort.
But it doesn't have to be, I'm sorry. Yeah, my other question is, did I just hear you say that basically the waste gets removed from the house? And has it like a, a septic tank, only it's not, it's a composting tank that then does its, does what it does outside of the house. So it's not actually in the house any longer.
There, there are many options.
Yeah, I can, yeah, okay.
But this is the one that we were hoping to recommend because it's separate from the unit.
Right, and, and just the cost, you know, even though if you're spending eighty thousand or a hundred thousand, another ten thousand or whatever it is to hook to a sewer, but it can be even more than that. It can be very expensive to hook to a sewer line.
The, one of the projects we did, the permission to connect to the sewer was seventeen thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Sewer line itself was another sixteen thousand dollars.
Right, exactly. And that's been upheld by the courts that, um, even though those costs, even for ADUs. But anyway, yeah, thank you. So that would be an additional thirty five thousand dollars.
Exactly.
Right, that's, okay, thank you.
Is that right?
Yeah, so, um, either one of you can answer this, but when you, when you do a composting toilet, then what's the plan for the gray water and what? I mean, I have some understanding that we're, that the county is not very receptive to gray water, um, systems that they so if either one of you can address how, because you're going to have, you're going to have a gray water, um, issue, you know, you're going to have to deal with.
Do you want me to answer that? Or do you?
I mean, I have a, a partial response. One of the main issue, one of the main scenarios is here is that this is a very small capacity. It's a single bathroom and a, and a very small kitchen. So there isn't as much volume as a gray water system would be in a larger house.
Four hundred and forty square feet, likely two residents, I mean, you could have, I'll get to the limitations in terms of the number of, of individuals that you'd have in one of these four hundred and forty square foot. The gray water is kind of an interesting piece because that could also be repiped um, and then reused to a certain degree. We're talking about that for various projects on a regular basis. Not a requirement, but there are plumbing code standards when you're, when you're applying that.
And I have another question, and that is, you know, should we consider maybe prohibiting the connection of a tiny home to a septic system? Because we've got kind of an overburdened, uh, situation in the valley as it is.
The, the connection for, into an existing septic system is kind of interesting because as we found out through Ali County, anytime you're doing that, there is typically, in talking with the, uh, building official, there's typically a reporting that needs to go out once you connect to an existing system to, to ensure that it can handle the additional load. And that reporting system is, is extremely expensive and it's annual. So it almost becomes cost prohibitive to do that, especially for something like what we're talking about here. Could you, could we take that measure, could this body take that measure? Yes, I think it's almost cost prohibitive to just do it anyway.
Yeah, so the connection to the septic tank is going to be excluded by economics.
I, I would assume so, yeah. The, the reports, the reports from what I've heard from residents talking about going that route um, have identified somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to ten thousand dollars for each report. And that's annual.
And I would note that the current ordinance is drafted in, is presently in place, does allow septic. But again, it's an option subject to those economic components. The council could prohibit septic and require sewer or require sewer or composting toilet or keep it as all three or two, you got choice.
Yeah, I would support, um, uh, you know, if it's economically unfeasible and people aren't going to do it, but I would also probably support making it, taking it out as an option. Just because even if people had the money to do it and decided to do it and got through the compliance issues annually, probably still don't want them to do it when we get a heavy rain, you know? I would like to investigate more the idea of gray water and recycling and the ability to do that. So that might be, that might be out of scope of what we're talking about, but I think it's also, um, as we move forward in an attempt to bring in, you know, sort of forward-thinking, uh, processes for recycling water and water management, we might want to, um, put some sort of information around how that might work. You know, just to make it easy for people, or potentially you might have that already, it might be something that would be an easy drop-in. I'm not suggesting that you do it for your business, but I am suggesting that the city as part of, um, you know, what it does to support this also uh, gives people ideas on how they might do the gray water recycling.
Mr. Harvey, I just want to clarify, you, you suggested that if we were to go forward tonight, but before the second reading, there would be a kind of a workshop where we could look at examples and things like that.
We could, if council wants to do that, absolutely, we, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
And you could, you could, sorry, you could slow walk it as much as you wanted to. No, there's no violation in spending, spending more time to adopt an ordinance.
Of course. Yes.
Um, I just have one question about electricity. Is it, so I'm assuming that these are all electrified, that there were not using gas infrastructure, is that, is that correct?
It, it depends on what's allowed.
Okay.
The two that we've done before have connected to, one's connected to the gas, one's connected to propane. We can do all electric, we can do solar, we can do a hybrid of many of them. Always cost-effective to do all electric and solar with a unit as small as it is if someone has solar on their house already. But there's a lot of different ways of, of doing it.
Thank you.
So, yep, i- is there, um, a reason that we're not talking about incinerating toilets? I know it's a different cost structure, but my understanding with an incinerating toilet, I mean, it's kind of all gone.
I've done zero research on that, I can look into it.
The one thing that I have learned in my research about incinerating toilets is that they're not fun to live with permanently. They're great for temporary use if you have a cabin that you visit occasionally or if you have, you know, a travel trailer with one in it. I've steered people away from them because it does create some smells. It does have some not great long-term stuff. And the units themselves aren't necessarily designed to be used full-time for someone over a long period of time.
Yes.
I just hear, I just hear the word incinerator and I'm like, ooh, red flag, but.
High energy use potentially.
Yeah, okay.
So I think we've gone around, but, um, I, we have a proposal here, um, and we've heard it well, we've heard an offer of a workshop. So I would like to entertain a motion that we, um, accept the proposal for the, for the change and I, I would include the compostable toilet as an option.
Would you be willing?
That's a motion.
Yeah, would you be willing to take a friendly amendment that we, um, disallow septic?
Yes, I'm, I'm willing to add that.
And that we put in some sort of protection around, um, lot usage for the, uh, sycamores and oaks? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
That, do we need, I mean, I'm happy to do that, but I made the assumption that we had that, we would have that already, but is that incorrect?
Within our true ordinance, we've already got that.
That's what I thought.
Projections, yeah. It would require them to do a tree, um, report and then to have an arborist provide assessment.
Perfect, thank you, not necessary.
So is that a second then from you?
So I, um,
Okay.
I would like to see the information about composting. I believe that I would be supportive of composting, but I think we need to kind of receive the information uh, so that we know what the, you know, pros and cons and they potentially raise questions. You mentioned you've done that for.
Planning commission, yes.
For planning commission, I'm, you know, I'm happy to have this come back on the composting issue, but I'd, I'd really like to see that material.
Look, it's a dirty conversation, but we will have it at a workshop.
I, I get, I, I guess potentially we could, I mean, we could have moved that. I'll ask, I'll ask, uh, city manager, but I guess we could potentially, well, no, if we, if we, if we approve tonight, then we can't just like get the information and then approve it on the second.
No, you, 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 so you're, you can make changes in between, uh, the first and second read, so you absolutely could.
We could add composting as a.
I, I, well, I'm going to let the city attorney weigh, this is a legal question.
Yeah, so if we introduce the ordinance as proposed tonight with adding compostable toilets as an option and disallowing septic as a, as a not option. You can introduce that tonight and then come back next time with more information on compostable toilets. And at that time.
Oh, wait, um, I think we're talking about having a workshop. We still, is that, or is that no longer part of the?
No, that's the part that I was asking for clarification.
Is that, I didn't hear that in your motion, is it in your motion?
No, and I would, I would want to have the workshop in between, absolutely.
Now you have a workshop.
Yep.
Right, so you start off with the first read with, with these, and, and it could be expounded upon and discussed in the workshop, right?
Yeah, so it's first reading here, then a workshop, and then if you're prepared for it, you could do second reading at the workshop. You could also have the workshop just be a workshop.
Let's have the workshop be a workshop, come back here again, but, and I think the question that Mr. Harvey is getting to is, could we remove the composting based on, after the information and keep the rest? At the second read? As long as we can do that.
Right, so, but.
You can delete it at a second reading like that.
Yeah, just to know that if we were to delete the composting, we would be adding thirty five thousand dollars to the ticket.
I hope we don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I hope we don't.
You know, I just want to make sure we're clear about that, okay, perfect.
I'm hearing Mr. Whitman say that he thinks he would approve it, he's just asking for the information.
Yeah.
Right.
Just to make sure we're.
And I think that's good.
Google it.
Safety obligation. I just, I have one more question, I'm, I know the motion's out there, but. So we had the limitation of ten, uh, units per year in the, in the pilot program. And of course, we only had two over the course of two years, but I, you know, I guess one other protective measure that I want to do is, can, you know, can we extend that limitation per year as, uh, to, you know, whatever number is reasonable. It sounds like if we said ten, we're not likely to get a, I, I don't know, if, because we're loosening up the.
No, you're, you're.
We're, we're making it easier to do this, so.
Yeah, it's divorcing itself from the ADU regulations, so.
I just don't want to suddenly have like forty of these in our, in our, in our neighborhood saying, you know, what, what did you do to us?
I think there's two ways in which it could potentially to, to address your, your potential concern, and that would be to put a limitation on it, um, to cap it. The ten was never really a scientific number, it was like, hey, let's, ten sounds reasonable, right? And council was agreeable to that. The other option is to come back after a year and evaluate the number and see if, if it's more than ten, then why is it more than ten, what's going on? Um, I can tell you right now, we've got eight waiting. And it sounds like either they're overlapping with what Daniel's talking about, or it's independent, so.
So I'd like to make a friendly, a request, a friendly amendment that we put a, um, fifteen unit limit on a calendar year with, uh, the idea that we'd revisit that number at, at, uh, you know, after a year.
I'm open to that. What I, what I think is that, the reason why I'm open to it is that if we found that they were very successful and we were pleased with the outcome, we could always come back and raise the limit. But if this gets a, a lot of support going forward and we start to see these, then I think that would be a wonderful thing to see and a great addition to our allowances for housing. You okay with that? Okay enough?
Okay enough, whatever.
I'll take it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Can I jump in, sorry, one clarifying thing? So we're talking about a, a first read tonight, obviously, then a workshop, then a second. I'm going to ask if the council would have the appetite for slow walking this so that the workshop takes place sometime during the month of May, twenty twenty-five, and the second read comes back sometime in the month of June, twenty twenty-five. And the second read comes back sometime in the month of June, twenty twenty-five.
One question for that, and I wanna ask, the, the pending projects, are, are these, and not to say that they should drive this, but I'm just asking the question. Are they waiting for us to say yes to go?
They've been waiting since twenty twenty-three.
That, that's my only hesitation there, but not, not to say that that need drive it, but, um. I'd be eager, be more eager if we could possibly do it sooner is my request.
Yeah, agreed, and, and, um, given that people have been waiting since twenty twenty-three for these. Um, uh, revisions so that they actually can build. Would everyone, you know, eight and eight is sixteen, would any, would anyone object to twenty to see how it, how it plays out? So these people that have been waiting, um, you know, they can, they can move forward and. You know, I, I personally doubt that within a year, twenty are gonna go.
With twenty, I was kinda debating fifteen or twenty.
Great, okay, I think twenty is good, that way we, we've got covered people who have, uh, shown an interest.
Thank you, guys.
So, sorry, back, back to the timing, so could the workshop be in the first part of May and then the second read comes the second meeting of May? Is that?
I'd fine with me, but.
Acceptable?
Acceptable enough?
We, we can't return at the next meeting.
Understood.
Okay.
I get that.
Okay.
Plus, I, I think that's reasonable, I, um, if we try to do it any sooner, I don't know that, that it'll be complete, like. I need a little bit of time.
Okay.
And then we're gonna get the composting, uh, we'll need a little research.
Yes, the workshop will include that, but absolutely, when we come back to council in June, we will have that.
End of, end of May.
End of May.
I'm sorry.
Well, he was proposed, I, I was.
So, beginning of May for the workshop.
End of, second meeting in May, second read.
And when we come in for the workshop, we'll have the ordinance adjusted to reflect tonight's discussion.
Maybe a compromise, okay, could we have a compromise maybe for the first meeting in June for the second read? I'm sensing my director ha- having, getting.
There's a lot of things on the plate right now, I think if, if we're just trying to be fair, I would prefer the first meeting in June.
Okay.
And that, that one, I, I can feel comfortable with.
I want, I want to defer to you on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'm very excited to hear about compostable toilets, the options.
Excited to present.
Okay.
Mr. Montgomery, are you, are you willing to read it back, or do you want me to say what I think it is?
I can read it back.
Please do.
We have a motion by Mayor Gilman with a second by council member Rule. Bear with me here, I'm gonna read through all of them, to approve the item as recommended and direct staff to provide a public workshop for input before returning for a second reading. And adoption, and including in the ordinance, the compostable toilet as an option, and to not allow the septic tank option. With a friendly am- amendment to place a twenty unit limit on the first calendar year of ador- of ordinance adoption. And for staff to return in the, in May with a workshop and the first meeting in June for the second reading.
Well done. You're killing it.
Board?
You're killing it.
Council member Mang. Mayor Pro Tem Lang.
Yes.
Mayor Gilman.
Yes.
Council member Whitman.
Yes.
Council member Rule.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, wow, exciting. All right, that's it, council member reports, anyone?
I don't know if we should.
Yeah.
Bring it up, um, Rachel, when we just got the new rotation with our liaison positions. And Rachel, when we were handing out duties, she has far more than I took. So, and, um, I'm willing to step up and take her place with the HPC, continue with that, that I have been. And continue with the Parks and Rec to give her a time for herself or work and all of that stuff. So I just wanted to bring that up to let you know if that's.
So, uh, if I understand this correctly, uh, council member Mang would be assuming two commission liaison roles. Taking one from the mayor pro temp, and I'm seeing head nods from the council, I'm seeing no disagreement. So we'll take that as direction, Mr. Montgomery will update everything accordingly. Mr. Seibert, you understand that you have the same council member, it's easy for you, right, okay, there you go, thank you.
Related, uh, just to keep everybody abreast, that, um, we, in working with the chair and also the vice chair of the Parks and Rec Committee. That we will have some interviews possibly as soon as Monday, um, and also the following Friday, and we hope. That we will have, uh, candidates to affirm here at our next council meeting, and then we would have a working, a working body and all of our commissions will be up and running. Stay tuned. Yep. Yep, anything else? And I'm assuming we'll do future agenda items, we'll continue on our strategic planning and tactics, um, city manager report.
No report, but it, this is also a time if the council does have future agenda item requests, yes, long-term, we would like to use the work plan as the guiding light. But we're not quite there yet, so please, if there are future agenda items, this is the time.
Great.
Gonna once again request an indemnification agenda item, I'll make a formal request as well. Um, I've made an informal request, but I will, uh, formalize that request, that is a. I think is the mayor thing that needs to be looked at, so, um, hopefully that will make it onto the agenda.
Anybody else? Okay, um, then we are journeying, thank you very much.